I'm gonna turn the volume up as much as I can, but.
Good evening. I had to call this special planning board meeting to order. And I'm going to start with roll call. We have some technical difficulties. So if you can't hear, send a chat. All right. Shannon.
Present.
Taya.
Present.
Jim.
Present.
Misha.
Present.
Amy.
Present.
Jessica.
Present.
Tori.
Present.
Jonathan. Stacy. I feel like I'm shocked. Because I am. Okay. We'll go on to general public comment. This is on matters that are not related to any items on tonight's agenda. Is there any public comment? Not related to anything we are talking about tonight? Come to the podium if you have public comment.
I have a pretty loud voice. I'm Italian and I was a teacher too. But.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is Nancy Atkins. And I live at 408 Brookline Street, Unit D. I'm in the new housing development. And so I just, I've been trying to get ahold of the planning board and I did talk to the city manager. Because, well, first of all, I want to congratulate you for all your work. I know it's hard. I understand that. And there's lots of things going on as I drive through town, I see that. But I, I am right off of Miles Street. And this is a continual problem is going to be worse again this winter. As you know, we're not very far, we're a couple blocks from Green Acres. And they are putting in sewers, which I'm happy about. But the problem is now they're doing other kinds of roadwork too. They're doing chip seal. And it's almost every morning I wonder if I am going to be able to get out of my homes. And because Miles Street, they put chip seal on. Now they're working on Maple Street, I believe. And I never know every day. I have been going to the hospital for therapy. And I've been able to do it this summer, but I wasn't able to do it last winter. So I'm really concerned about that. I live one mile away from the hospital. And it's kind of, as many people my age is kind of our second home right now. So anyway, but I am really concerned because I did go to the city manager and he tried to see Jim, but Jim wasn't in the office that day, Jim Woodall, I believe. And anyway, and I have never heard back anything on it. Because Miles Street is a problem. And furthermore, people are parking off of Miles Street. They have no designated parking. If you haven't been there, please drive down there, you'll see what the issue is. Now, with so many people from Green Acres, everybody's using Miles Street too. And people are walking down Miles Street. I stop and ask them not to walk down Miles Street because it's dangerous. It's an accident waiting to happen as we go along into wintertime. And I'm really concerned and I don't know how to get this resolved. I was on the condo board. I've, I've talked to the city manager. I just don't know what to do about it. And in planning other developments, this is a real concern. You know, so.
So thank you, Nancy. I don't know if you've heard it, but my timer went off.
Okay. Well, anyway, that's, that's what I want to say. And I came because I can't get on Zoom for some reason, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there any other public comment on anything other than what's on the agenda for tonight? Is there any public comment online that I, that I can't see? I don't see her here. I don't see anything in the chat that I can tell at the moment. Second. Okay. Public comment is closed. Going to move, well, let's make sure, are you on?
Nope.
It's not working.
There is an option to leave computer, uh, computer audio. You might want to try that.
It's the, is this hooked in? For one more, I have fixing audio problems. Thank you. Should we test it again and see? It's gonna work now?
Yep.
Well, it was already on, it just didn't. Okay. Set straight. Taya and Jim, can you hear us?
Yes. Yes. I can see everything now too.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're working.
So I.
Kind of a odd start to meeting. Okay. Yeah, it's been recording. So we are going to move on to the old business of the public hearing for Mountain View subdivision continued. Um, so. So, um, I was not at the meeting, so I wasn't able to be there, but I did watch the entire video. And I believe um, based on the parliamentary order, I can make a motion to reconsider the previous motion. Mm-hmm. That is correct. Um, to approve the conditions that were discussed in the staff report along with the additional additions that I think I jotted down, which was the waiver of protest to the SID or the water sewer loop, requirement for bear proof garbage cans or for them to be stored inside and wildlife safe fencing, uh, financial allowance for a welcome sign for welcome to Livingston sign and that dogs be leashed on all dedicated public spaces. I think those were the ones that I remember. Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. And I did forget before we got going that Jennifer was going to, or somebody was going to say what it takes for voting regardless of the numbers that it requires.
Yeah, just sorry, thank you. To clarification, there's eight board members here. So for the motion to pass tonight, you will need five of eight votes.
Okay. So, uh, the motion on the floor is a motion to reconsider the previous motion. And we have to first vote on reconsidering it. So we have to, we can have discussion if you have questions as to what the motion is. And then we will take a vote on that. If it passes, then we would discuss the previous motion. If it doesn't pass, then we would be open to entertaining another sensitive motion. Okay. So that's how that works.
I'm sure my, my only question would be is just if, if the conditions that Misha brought up are actually, are consistent with what we had discussed at the last meeting or the previous movie.
And I believe they are. Yes. There was.
Tried to write the, I, I was able to go back and take notes since I was watching it. I tried to get them all, but I could have been.
I've heard of a word here or there.
So seriously, you have a question, I wasn't there either. And I, I would love that opportunity to just give some, um, I guess, discussion and perspective on some of the comments that were made in the last meeting. And because I wasn't able to participate and she jumped in with a motion. And you've, you've got a second. So at what point do we have, so discussion now is on that motion?
Discussion is on that motion solely.
Okay.
Just a motion to reconsider the previous motion, so that that brings it up. If the motion to reconsider passes.
Okay.
Then we are back to having discussion on that motion.
Okay. So the motion itself does not pass, we're just.
Right. You're just voting to reconsider that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Because this is a continuation.
And I don't think we needed to rehash the last four hours that got to the point where everything stopped because there wasn't enough people.
I just want to make sure I have an opportunity to get my opinion and my discussion.
For sure.
So that, oh, it's nothing to do with it.
Okay.
There was room for that.
Sure. Is there any other questions on what the motion is? Okay, so we are just voting on the motion to reconsider the previous motion.
Okay.
Okay. And so we're only voting and we need five people either way to make it pass. Are we ready for the vote? Okay. Or fail. So we'll start with the motion to reconsider, Shannon.
Four.
And Taya.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Misha.
Four.
Amy.
Four.
Jessica.
Four.
Tori.
Four.
And I'm four as well. So that's all in favor to, um, discuss the previous motion. Now, in this discussion on the previous motion, which as she read, I can read it again. Does everybody want me to read it again? All right, I will just read it. The motion was to approve with conditions the Mountain View subdivision as found in the staff report on August 16th, 2023, with the added conditions waiver of protest for the SID for any future water and sewer loop, require bear proof garbage cans or require that cans be stored inside and have wildlife safe fencing, have a financial allowance for a welcome to Livingston sign, that dogs be leashed on all dedicated public open spaces. That was the motion. So now we're, we're in the discussion phase.
That includes the staff report condition.
Yeah, that was that and the 17 staff report with conditions.
Um, should I do it? Clarification, I had in my notes that the, um, the gateway sign, the condition was just to place it on their property. So I just want to make sure that it was, was the condition financial and to place on their property?
Hmm. Shannon, I believe you made that motion. I.
So it was, my motion was to just have a, a spot that was out of the MDT right away on one of the locks to be able to place that welcome to sign.
Okay, so, um, I didn't record that correctly then, so it would be a, to place.
A space where, yeah.
Right. So Misha, did you get that too when you were going through? Did I make a?
Yeah.
Did I mistake what, what?
No, I, I, I mean, if that's what your motion was, I might have misheard it.
Okay. Um, other questions or other things that you'd like to bring up at this point?
Like to bring up such as?
Well, this is on this motion, just on this motion.
So the motion passed, right?
To, to discuss the motion.
So are we in the discussion?
We are in the discussion of the motion, yes.
One other reminder, I also had it in my notes that there was mention of the covenants that was included in here to make those, I believe it was binding, because there is language in here that just says this is, this could be what it is. Is that not?
I, I thought that there was. I didn't think. In their paperwork that there weren't going to be covenants.
Their paperwork has a list of what could be covenants. So it is not binding. What is in here, summary of covenants is not binding because of language that they have that says this list is not intended to be all inclusive or a replacement of the actual covenants. So.
I, so we could ask to have that part of the conditions.
Yeah.
But I, well, tricky because and we asked since it was paperwork to have this be included. I don't know that we can change.
Yeah. What page is that?
This is the last, last, absolute last page. A thousand pages.
But I thought in the, the, the discussion that we had was that we needed legal counsel to determine whether you could attach that or not. So it wasn't as a condition for when we voted.
Okay.
That was.
Would cover any change based on what was built?
Yeah, the change, the covenants can change too, that's issue I have.
And I think that we, I mean, speaking for myself, but I think we've addressed some of the things in the covenants that were concerns and that's the bear proof garbage cans are storing inside while by friendly fencing.
That was the issue.
And we should have handled.
I, I don't think at this point that the developer would have any idea what, I mean, they have a general idea of what the covenants are going to be, but to require them to have covenants at this stage, premature.
Sorry, just making sure on this.
Any other questions from the room?
I'm sure. Before they get subdivision through, they're gonna have their covenants in place. And so they require that at this point would be premature.
You mean subdivision for individual plots? You just said prior to subdivision approval, they'll need.
By the county.
By the county?
Yes, or by the city under our, our regulations prior to subdivision approval, final subdivision approval, they're gonna have to have their covenants in place.
Okay, this is for preliminary plot.
This is just preliminary. So final plot approval, they have to have those covenants in place.
And the final plot approval is an administrative process? Is that correct?
Yeah.
It won't be a public, public hearing?
Yeah, no, it's an administrative process.
So I, I guess my question would be with the condition that we have on the table, are, are we comfortable as a group that that condition can be put into, are required to be put into a covenant or some stuff?
Yes, you could, you know, there's certain things such as what you're discussing here that would, that you could, in order to give at this point approval to have those placed in the covenants.
So was there something in the covenant? It's the very last page and it's.
342.
Yeah.
Thanks.
There was a. Was there something that in general, Shannon, that you wanted added from that list that we didn't cover?
No matter, I was just, I just wanted to make sure that the condition that we, as the plan or have a motion on covers the intention that we all have with
Right.
bear proof garbage containers while by friendly fencing, uh, dogs on leases, which is really a city code probably issue anyway.
Because it says here on front, first page, I know, talked about garbage cans. Which is weeds. Construction border. All garbage shall be stored in animal proof containers or made unavailable to animals. What was written on here? Does that answer your question, Shannon?
It does, I, I'm comfortable.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Yeah, if, um, Jessica, did you want to say something?
I do.
Okay.
I'm just curious when the time is.
So, well, it depends on what it's pertaining.
Okay, so I guess my, uh, what I would like to do, since I was unable to attend our last meeting and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to watch it online. And I appreciate that I'm able to make comments this evening. So I just wanted to be able to share my comments perhaps on this motion that we have re crumbled. Um, so I just wanted to premise how much I appreciate the, the crew from a Mountain View coming back and revising your proposal. Um, I am coming from kind of the healthcare, uh, public safety industry, I guess. And so I do have a couple of, um, concerns about the staff report and maybe some inconsistencies that I see um, that came out of the findings of fact. Um, so, uh, I'm going to start with saying in my work for Livingston Healthcare, historically, I've been able to attend a lot of FEMA trainings on disaster preparedness. And we were told at one of these events that the most likely disaster that we will face as a community is a railroad derailment. And so I wanted to preface that because this property is adjacent to the railroad. And my concerns lie with local services and, um, the effect on local services, the effect of the natural environment and effect on public health and safety. So those are the three findings of facts that I'm addressing with my comments right now. Um, when the city decided to change the zoning of this parcel from light industrial to highway commercial, there were two other considerations the city was trying to put forth at that time. One was an emergency services levy. So our former city manager had spent a lot of time, um, speaking with community members, speaking with business owners and institutions in our community about the need for increasing emergency services. That was put on the ballot in June of 2018, very close to the time when we decided to change this zoning and that levy failed. The voters voted that down. In addition to that, at that same time, our city manager was working on promoting an overpass or an underpass. And he had, again, held a number of public meetings. He had gone to different businesses and institutions to promote, uh, building an overpass or an underpass. And he had given four separate locations. One by the corner where Highway 10 kind of hits that curve. I think there's like a sheriff's office, a sheriff car dealership or something there. So that was the location that I was, um, under the impression that our former senior manager really wanted the overpass to go. The other one was directly across from PFL Way. One was at the Discovery Vista and one was at the Star Edition. So that, uh, was being, um, kind of explained to the community, but the way we were going to pay for that was through a community wide tax and then a special improvement district for all the folks who are living on the north side of town. So when that got on the ballot, which was November of 21, and I think the pandemic may have slowed that process because those meetings sort of had to stop and then they got rekindled. That also failed at the ballot. And I think the reason why that failed or maybe some contributing factors, it failed significantly is because there was not a location added to that, um, proposal. And there was not a specific way of how we were going to pay for it at that time. So my concern is that I think when the city decided to change the zoning regulation or the zoning designation in this particular parcel from light industrial to highway commercial, it was anticipated that there was going to be a lot of growth on the west side. And that in order to be able to accommodate that growth safely, we needed more emergency services and we needed a better exit route in case of disaster. And so we've not done either of those as a community. We voted against both of those measures. So my point on local services, I realize the fire chief had signed off on this. However, with all due respect to our fire chief, he moved here a year ago from Florida. So he's been here for one year. He hasn't had, uh, that many winters. Um, and again, you know, I respect their decision, uh, or their, their comment, but I'm just a little bit concerned about exit strategy if we decide to develop this to the level that it could possibly be. So when the highway closes, it closes to the east towards Livingston Healthcare or towards Billings, and it closes to the west. And that definitely happened this past winter. Therefore, if there was some sort of fire and we had a fire in the valley in an open grassland in January in 2023, it just happened. If there was a fire or a derailment and the interstate was closed, the only exit out of this place is Highway 10 heading east. And the exit at the end of Livingston on the east side would also be closed. So then you've got traffic coming bumper to bumper, semis coming in from the east heading west. So I don't think that at this point in time, our city has the infrastructure available for emergency evacuation of this parcel of property that is essentially an island. And if something like that were to happen and the highway were closed, I'm not quite sure how we would get everybody out. So that is my first comment. And that is why I am concerned for this subdivision to be approved at this time. I don't think our city is prepared to evacuate an area with that much commercial infrastructure, having the potential for highway commercial, um, development in that area. And then I just had a couple other comments for a couple other board members, since I wasn't here, I just wanted to give my perspective on a couple of comments that were made. So the first one was made by Taya, Taya who represents the county. Um, so my perspective on Taya's comment, Taya's comment was that the county is really, uh, encouraging development to happen within the city. They'd rather see that info happen in the city than sprawl out into the county. And I understand where she's coming from, I understand where the county's coming from. However, this particular parts of parcel, with the exception of adjacent property to the west, is completely surrounded by county. And so if I were the county, this is not necessarily the part, the parcel that I would be promoting a lot of development because developing can be contiguous. And if we develop here, then the, the parcels adjacent will most likely either want to get annexed into the city, which we know that they most likely are interested in because if you go a bit further to the east, that is city and mixed use. So given that the county has very few, if any, opportunities to regulate growth in their area, this does not seem like the place where we would want, the county would really, it would be in their best interest to see growth. Well, that was my response to Taya's comment. Uh, my next one is for Amy. Amy had mentioned hotels and the need for this type of development in this area. And so I, uh, with all due respect, uh, there are two large hotels that Jeff went up in our highway commercial district. The Fairview in Fairfield Inn, who's run by Marriott. They have 90 rooms. And then the one right next door is the Hilton. And I don't know how many rooms they're gonna have, but it looks pretty much similar. So maybe that's around 200 hotel rooms that are going in an existing highway commercial area that is not adjacent to a railroad and is not adjacent to an open grassland. So it is not as, um, susceptible perhaps to this evacuation issue. Um, it has more opportunities for exits. And then my last comment was for Shannon. Shannon mentioned that there has, uh, there are, there is the opportunity. We were talking about congestion and the, the worry about how much congestion would be happening from the different types of, and I can't remember what the, what the term was. People going in and out of that development. But he had mentioned that you can request MDT lower speed limit. While Livingston Healthcare tried to request MDT lower speed limit from 60 down to 45 because we, you know, as many of you know where we're located, after you come off that, uh, bridge, it's 60 the minute you get off of that. And MDT was not willing to change our speed limit in that area. So again, I just feel like. And MDT was not willing to change our speed limit in that area, so again, I just feel like. That transportation, the evacuation, the susceptibility to. Train derailment, natural disasters, wildfire, um the fact that it's an island uh and surrounded by county. Um, I also have concerns about the environment runoff. Um, the tributary of that Eglin Creek uh running into the Yellowstone, but really my main concerns are. I think that when the city decided to change the zoning, they also wanted to expand emergency services, and they wanted to create another evacuation route. For that area because they were planning on developing. And that's kind of my pitch.
Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Sure.
Comments from anybody else, uh Tori?
Uh, thank you for that, really appreciate it, um you. Better articulated some of the concerns that I had in our last meeting, which I'm not gonna reiterate. Um, but I I really appreciate the consideration, I mean, thank you, so thank you.
Thanks. Anything from online?
Can I ask Jessica a question?
Sure, Jim, go ahead.
Um, I brought up the idea of putting it back into light industrial. At the last meeting. Would that? Would that satisfy any of your concerns if it were not quite just a anything goes willy nilly place? Like it's proposed right now?
You know, I think it would certain, you know, Jim, thanks for that question, um. I do think that given the uh engineers. Had to uh and I realize it wasn't a requirement for them to do that, to do this, but they had to give us an estimate of what they projected to be there. That to me. Sounded really uh. You know, unsafe and and somewhat irresponsible without an exit route, you know, I assume that. You know, if you were going to turn that into light industrial and you had more businesses like Tech Electric or um. What's their uh? The FedEx place, you know, perhaps that volume would be less and you'd be evacuating less people. So I suppose that yes, in the long run, changing that designation back to light industrial. Would at least be less of a risk of having a, you know, a large volume of people being needed, needed to be evacuating at a time. Um, however, I think that based on what I heard, I think in the meeting. The developer would have to request that zoning change, um and so I'm not, I'm sorry.
The landowner.
The landowner, oh yes, thank you, the landowner, that makes more sense, um so. You know, per- perhaps they'd be interested in doing that, I'm I'm not convinced they would be, however, I think if if this is something that is desirable, I think that. You know, I eventually, absolutely, if we have the right infrastructure in place, be able to make sure that we can get people out of there safely. That's my sort of main concern.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, I'll just comment on that, cause I. I appreciate that Jennifer brought up in her staff report that in the growth policy that we all worked very hard on um. Future land use map shows that as community commercial. That um. Dedicates it to medium and large scale wholesale retail lodging offices and service establishments, typically uh located along. Major corridors that can function independently adjoining development and or require individual access to public right subway, so. That's how I see it.
Okay. Is there any um further discussion or does anybody wish to make an amendment to any of the motions or the conditions that are? Listed?
I would. I would like to put a condition on there that the. Property owner rezones it to light industrial. If it is approved by the commission.
Can you do that? I.
That was. I don't think you can require that. You know, that that's that's a something that the city has to entertain, I don't think you can yeah uh require a a landowner to. Uh request that. Resorting.
Jim, did you hear that?
At the last meeting, I was instructed that. The owner would have to initiate this, not the city. And so I'm saying this owner should initiate a rezoning.
What what I'm trying to say is I don't think you can make that as a condition for pl- for preliminary plot approval.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to um vote?
Can I make my comment?
No, you can't, sorry. Okay. No further discussion then.
Can you explain one more time exactly what we're voting for this?
Sure. So what we are voting for at this point is to. Vote on. The motion. To approve with the seventeen conditions. Found in the staff report for the Mountain View subdivision on August sixteenth two thousand and twenty-three. With the added conditions. Waiver of protest for the SID for any future water and sewer loop. Two, to require bear proof garbage cans or require that the cans be stored inside and have wildlife safe fencing. Three, have a space for a welcome to Livingston sign. And four, that dogs be leashed on all dedicated public open spaces. That's the motion before us. And as. Jennifer said it takes five votes to pass or not pass emotion. Good, so we're all clear on that, alright. And I will call for the vote. Hey. Shannon.
Four.
Taya.
Four.
Jim.
Against.
Misha.
Four.
Amy.
Four.
Jessica.
Against.
Tori.
Against.
So that is three against and, oh, Amy, I forgot, um, four. So it's five to three. So that means that this motion passed. Did I get that right? Okay. Okay. Okay.
Motion that we recommend it to the.
That.
Commission.
That we recommend it to the city commission. So at this point, we will just have um. Time for a few board comments. Are there any board comments?
Uh, I'll make a comment.
Okay.
Thanks, um Chair Jovick and um. Director Severson. Um, and uh and John, Mr. Haskin, uh for bringing your uh professional. Expertise and wa- waiting us through this kind of new and challenging territory, it was um. It's been a learning curve for all of us, and I appreciate the the effort and the persistence to to get us, get us through it, so thank you.
Anybody else have any board comments? I will say I have learned a lot.
Um, Madam Chair, we're gonna have to learn. A different process after October first, based on what the Montana legislature's passed, so um. We should probably have a discussion on that or next meeting on what the new legislation.
Okay.
implements as far as subdivision review.
Okay. Well, and I hope that I guess my comment would just be for Tori in that uh when you presented or when you're asked about um. Our recommendation, I don't know if you were ever given a a chance to speak, but. To um. You know, it's, there's obviously some differences of opinions, so. Do.
I will certainly uh highlight the nuance of how the planning board came to this decision in our in the commission.
Okay. Anything else? Then our next um board meeting will be on September twentieth. Is that right? And the meeting is adjourned.
Right.
Oh, is that right?
Wow.